Meeting call to order. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
The other staff members in attendance, we have City Manager Donna Viero, we have City Attorney Frederick Rofetto, we have Michael Manzella, Deputy City Manager and Director of Transportation, we have Joe Delarazzone, Director of IT, we have Joanne Booze, our CFO, and we have Tyrone Young, our tax collector, also attending the meeting. We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner: The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to special events applications.
Sure, just give me a moment to... Go ahead, Alicia.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. The first application before you is the We Will Be Counted Census Family Reunion to be held on September 13th in Springwood Park. Next is Clean Ocean Action on October 24th. The 2020 Police Unity Tour on September 27th. New Jersey AIDS Walk would be held on October 4th. The Asbury Park Technical Academy of Dance will be holding their recital in Springwood Park on September 12th. We have two requests to cross an orange to use Kennedy Park for private wedding reception. The first date is September 13th, the second date is October 16th. Georgie's End of Summer Block Party on September 26th. And we have wedding applications on September 19th, September 25th. And a request to use Springwood Park Reviving the City, God is Love, would just be one date, September 25th, Friday, September 25th. And lastly, we have, oh, another wedding, on September 28th. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you.
All right.
We are on to a proclamation. We have a proclamation recognizing September as Hunger Action Month. Do you want me to read this, mayor?
Please.
Whereas the hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States, the state of New Jersey, and whereas the city of Asbury Park is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger, and whereas the city of Asbury Park is committed to working with Fulfill, formerly the food bank of Monmouth and Ocean Counties, to educate people about the role and the importance of food banks in addressing hunger and to devote more resources and intention to hunger issues, and whereas more than 215,000 individuals in Monmouth and Ocean Counties can now rely on food provided by Fulfill and its partners since the beginning of the pandemic, and whereas the unemployment level is... whereas the unemployment level is the highest it's ever been in the history of the state, and the poverty level for a family of four is 25,465, and 9.5% of families live below that level, and whereas since March 13th, 2020, Fulfill has provided 1,986,909 meals, including 16,000 more meals per day than the year before, and 903,984 of those meals were provided to Monmouth County residents. And whereas due to the pandemic, one in every six people in Monmouth and Ocean Counties received emergency food from Fulfill and their network of food pantry, soup kitchen, shelters, and other community organizations, and whereas food banks across the country, including Fulfill, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in its efforts to end hunger in the local community. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park, the county of Monmouth, the state of New Jersey do hereby recognize September as Hunger Action Month in the city of Asbury Park and call this observance to the attention of its Okay, we are on to items to be presented. We have David Kaplan, the Registered Municipal Accountant, with the report of the 2019 municipal audit.
Just going to unmute David right now.
Good evening, mayor and council. Hope everyone can hear me okay.
Yes.
I wanted to start off by expressing my appreciation to the mayor and council for the continued opportunity to serve the city of Asbury Park as their independent auditor. It continues to be and has been a privilege, and I appreciate it, and so does the firm. So, thank you. We've completed the statutory audit for the period of 12/31/19 and 18, and we released that audit report on August 6, 2020, well within the extended deadline for filing, which was September 30, 2020. So, we were well within the timeframe for filing. The audit report itself is an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis financial statements. An unmodified opinion is really the auditor's highest form of assurance that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with the regulatory basis as prescribed by the Division of Local Government Services. So, that is what you would be looking for as an audity and as your auditor. I'm happy to report that's what we issued. The audit report format is very similar to those issued in the past. The notable exceptions this year are, one, the addition of a beach utility capital fund. In the past, you had a beach utility operating, but no utility capital fund, so we added that this year. There's a note to the financial statements regarding COVID-19 and what that meant to the city. Also this year, there was a single audit performed. Every other year or so, we have to actually take a closer look at the grant. This was the year that we had to do that, so we included a single audit and all the data that goes with that. And lastly, the parking utility was renamed the transportation utility. So, those are the major changes to the format of the report. And just remember that this report is a look back at where the city stood at December 31, 2019. It's a snapshot in time of what it looked like then, which seems like ages ago. Given that, I'll go over some of the financial highlights that you enjoyed at December 31, 2019. You had a cash position of about $64.4 million, long-term debt of approximately $30 million, short-term debt of approximately $25 million. Your tax levy was about $30.8 million, and your tax collection percentage was 99.94%, an amazing number. The current fund, which is your main operating fund of the entire city, had an ending fund balance of $12.8 million. That's an all-time record for the city and grew by about $800,000 over the prior year. The sewer utility had an ending fund balance of about $0.5 million, which was a reduction of about $150,000. Beach utility, $4.4 million, again, an all-time record for the city, and an increase of about $1.5 million over the prior year. And then finally, the transportation utility had $8.8 million in fund balance, another all-time record high, about a $2.6 million increase over the prior year. Those numbers that I just quoted are amazing, and everyone involved with the city, administration and finance should be really proud. They don't just happen, they take teamwork, they take leadership. And I said that those are pre-COVID numbers, but has been reported that. We didn't note any overexpenditures, we didn't note any new deferred charges, we had very little inter-fund activity, that's borrowings between the various funds of the city. We made very few adjustments to the records that were proposed to us for audit, and the CFO's records were in really good, or I would say excellent, shape. The city's fortunate to have the CFO and her team doing their thing. Also in our audit report, we give a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. Happy to report that's also an unmodified opinion, which means we didn't note any deficiencies in internal control and no compliance issues that would have an effect on your financial statements. That's also an unmodified opinion. The governing body is required, as you know, to sign a group affidavit resolution acknowledging the familiarity with the audit room and the comments and recommendations section of the report. So, I just wanted to report on that quickly. We did have seven audit recommendations this year, and they involve things like local public contracts, confirming orders, debt financing, information technology, and a couple on the CDBG program. I'd be happy to expand on anything that I've reported so far and take any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions?
See you, Nadine. Go on. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, and we thank you for doing an excellent job as usual.
Thank you.
We are on to, we have establishing an equity committee. I'm not sure who wants to speak.
I think Yvonne and I are going to tag-team at Melody. First slide, Mike? Yvonne's on, right?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm waiting.
Okay, okay, just making sure. Okay, first slide. We just wanted to spend a couple of minutes kind of talking about how this came about and some of the people and municipalities that we talked with in initially starting a Human Rights Commission. So, I'm going to also just go off-track for one second, because, one, I'm going to bring him up, and, two, he was the first person I met with regarding this, and that's Gil Caldwell. And so, I just want to acknowledge he passed and that he was a trailblazer in many, many ways, and, you know, our heartfelt condolences to his wife, Grace, and his family. So, one of the first people I initially met with regarding the Human Rights Commission was Gil Caldwell. Yvonne and I kind of tag-teamed and/or met together with members of the community to gauge the response and really try to get an understanding of the vision of what this would be, like what would a Human Rights Commission look like? And to give you some examples of some of the people we met with and a little bit about vision that we met with, Gil Caldwell, you know, really viewed this as kind of a lecturing series, you know. You know, I think his theme is that if you don't study history, you run the risk of repeating it. And we met with a number of people, Derek and Liza Minow, who really wanted to see a committee that had a lot of teeth and power. We met with Duane Small and Danny Harris, who, you know, one of the initiatives they wanted to see was a night court to kind of deal with some of the stuff we're seeing. We were seeing at the time downtown the behaviors and for the city to kind of profit a little bit from those behaviors and really trying to curb them. Nicole Harris, Jennifer Lewinsky, both really wanted to see police reform. And Reverend Van Zant, Pastor Jennings, also had, you know, kind of their vision of how they, you know, wanted to see a Human Rights Commission move forward. So, Yvonne and I were a little overwhelmed in the broadness of what people wanted to see. We then put a survey together in October of 2019, and that survey was... Well, actually, before I jump to the survey, I'd also like to talk, take a minute and just talk with the municipalities who have either Human Rights Commissions or Human Relation Commissions. So, Yvonne and I met with, and actually went to Red Bank's meeting, they have a Human Relations Committee. We met with Highland Park, they have a human rights. They also have an equity committee, and Lambertville, and most recently, Matutian, which has both an HRC and an equity committee. And what we took away from those municipalities, sorry, specifically was, especially Matutian, who we met with within the last, within the last probably month, was this idea of an equity committee. Also an HRC, but the equity committee was something that they felt really passionate about. So, in October of 2019, we put a survey together. That survey consisted of about 225 responses. That survey was mailed out, I believe, to everybody who got a tax bill. And the response was about 65% yes, the response was about 35% no, and the comments were also, you know, really, really broad in terms of what people wanted to see. So, I just wrote down a few. One was focusing on homelessness, one was vote for Trump, one was focusing on affordable housing, one was focusing on... I will say, at least two or three were focusing on human and civil rights, and then several of our comments, like "stop governing" or "you're creating a problem," you know, the comments were all over the place. I feel fairly comfortable saying that. And so, most recently, I've, you know, been in contact with both Derek and Pam about the HRC, and those conversations have been really helpful, but also not quite narrowing down, you know, what kind of committee this would be. Those conversations really consisted of, you know, would this be a city committee with a city attorney and city council members on it, and, you know, running it through, you know, all of the kind of bureaucratic channels that that entails? Or would this be kind of an ad hoc committee? And we used the example of the Affordable Housing Committee, and that was a committee that city council members were not on. The community completely really ran the show, but met with us, you know, periodically to give recommendations on what resulted in the eight or nine affordable housing ordinances that the city passed, ultimately passed. And I feel really comfortable, and I checked this with Derek, saying that of the recommendations that the Affordable Housing Committee made to the city, the city followed through on 90... 85 to 90% of them. So, Pam and I talked about that, Derek and I talked about that, and couldn't, you know, haven't quite gotten to a, you know, a position on, you know, what the HRC would look like. And so, in the midst of all of this and in light of what's happening nationally, Obama put together an Obama pledge, which really focused on, you know, things I think that Jennifer Lewinsky and Nicole Harris talked about, which was police reform and overpolicing and, you know, progressive policies in policing. And reviewing them, and I'm going to bump over to Yvonne, you have to cut me off, Yvonne, because when I start chatting...
Yeah, I know. Okay. This... So, we have come up with an equity committee. The equity committee is an ad hoc, short-term, with a singular focus, and that focus is community policing. And go back, please, to the previous slide. So, in this past summer, the Obama Foundation sent out an invite to cities, and the invite said, "We would like you to sign a pledge that commits your city to combating police violence and systematic racism." So, we looked at that and said, "This makes sense." A key component of the pledge is that the role and the importance of community policing and being sensitive to crime victims, residents, community leaders, and the meeting, and the media, and officers. It also had these four fundamental elements, and those are review police policies, as, again, as it relates to community policing, engage the community, get the community to come in and tell you their stories and their experiences. And then, it's important that this information be disseminated. So, we'll actually have a report back to the community and the council and seek feedback. And last, that there are going to be policies, hopefully, that, and practices that we can Next slide. Again, the goal is to identify best policy practices to increase the trust between the community and our police. And how we do that, these are our goals. We're going to ensure that everyone feels comfortable in the community, that we can encourage valuable discussions to happen, that during the equity committee, they are going to be inviting people to come in and talk. I think it's important to say that this committee will not always be an open forum. They will decide when the meetings are open to the public and when they won't be, because if they are talking to people around sensitive matters, we want to be sensitive to that. The last goal is that they're going to recommend updates, clarify different policies, implement new policies. And as I said, this is going to be a committee with a singular focus, and we're asking that the report be brought back to us within 120 days of creation of the public and to the public. It's up to the committee to determine how they're going to proceed, but we thought the end result should be based on the SMART policy, and that means it's specific, what do you want to do? Measurable, how are you going to do it? How are you going to measure it? How are you going to determine what your goals are? How will you measure that, and how will you be able to prove it? And it should be achievable. It has to be something that this committee has the power to do. There are things within the policing that this committee will not be able to address, and it should be realistic. Realistically, how can you achieve everything that we want to achieve? And last, it's got to be timely. We need to have timeframes. When are you planning to accomplish what the goals that have been set for you? Go on.
Yeah, so...
Okay.
Go ahead. So, yeah, well, I'll take this one. We were looking at kind of the makeup of the committee, and we wanted to, you know, ensure that you had, people had a direct, you know, face-to-face and conversation with, you know, two members of the city council, at least two members of the police department, the city manager or their designee. We wanted a member of the clergy, and then we wanted five public Asbury Park residents to be part of this committee, keeping it at 11, which we felt like, from talking to Matutian and Highland Park, was a pretty manageable number. Next slide. You want to handle that, Yvonne?
Okay. Applications are open. The deadline is going to be Friday, September 18, 2020, and you can find the applications on the website at this link, there's a link to the website and the city clerk. Or if you don't have access to media, you can go directly to the window outside the city clerk's office, and she can give you an application. And we will, and we will be appointing the members of this equity committee in the next committee, at the next council meeting, which I believe is September 23rd. So, please, get your applications in. And as I said, this is a short term, and it's only the beginning. This is not meant to replace a Human Rights Commission. It is only the beginning. It's one small piece of what we see, it's something that will be ongoing. And thank you. Anything else, Amy?
I think that's it. I think stressing, you know, this is, this was our first step, I think, in light of, you know, what's happening nationally. There's a feeling of urgency, I think, among everybody in moving forward with, you know, some policies in terms of community policing. And, you know, I spoke to Nicole Harris yesterday, who wants to meet about the Human Rights Commission, which we'll do immediately. You know, I think that is completely still on the table, just looking to kind of narrow down that scope on what kind of people envision. That's all I got.
That's it.
Okay, we are now moving on to matters from city council.
You're on mute, Eileen.
Hello. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, I'd like also to share my condolences to the family and friends of Reverend Gil Caldwell. Reverend Caldwell inspired many of us to have a voice, to be compassionate, be inclusive. His goal for One Asbury Park is also a goal that I share, and I speak for the rest of city council when I say that. So, I just wanted to share that. Also, COVID testing in Asbury Park, you know, we work diligently to bring COVID testing to Asbury Park and thanks to the Monmouth County Board of Tools and Freeholders and the Gwinne Foundation. We've been doing testing now for about one and a half. There are two dates left for testing. You do not have to be symptomatic. The tests take place at the Asbury Park Transportation Center, and the next one is Thursday, September 10, from 3 to 7, and Tuesday, September 15, from 9 to 1. So, you might want to take advantage of that while it's here. Also, on Tuesday, September 15, from January 11, Amy, Quinn, and I will host Coffee with a Coffee Person as we order coffee and tea outside 21 Coconut Avenue. It's an outdoor event. Please come and share any concerns, thoughts, or ideas you have. Masks are required, and we'd love to see you for a cup of coffee. So, show up if you're interested. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Again, I just want to appeal to the public that if you have not filled out your report for the 2020 census, please do so. It is so very important. This determines what the funds are that will come to the state and to the city. It impacts Section 8 housing, it impacts SNAP, Head Start, roadwork, our representation in Congress. If we don't fill it out, we will not get this funding, and the date has changed from the end of October to the end of September. So, please, 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 fill it out. Get your neighbors, talk to your friends, make sure that everybody takes this very, very seriously. And that's it for me.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes. I was very much surprised this month, talking to various people in the neighborhood and the residents of Asbury, that it's a lot of people that have yet to vote. Vote, and then November is the big, as you know, most of it is the big for the United States and surrounding areas. And I'd just like to just shout out... And I'd just like to just shout out that, hey, if you know someone that's just moved in the area and don't know anything about Esberry Park, or have any kind of political pull or anything of that nature, just tell them just to vote, vote. And that's all I have to say.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yeah, I'm going to bring like a couple of quick points. One, I would be remiss if, um, and I know the council feels the same way, if we didn't acknowledge our beach staff this summer, who, um, dealt with, um, an increase in people who maybe didn't always come to the beach. They went to Broadway Plays, or they went to dinner, or they went vacation, but are now coming to the, you know, spent a lot of time at the beach. And, um, and our beach staff did an amazing job of saves this summer. Um, I know that we've extended the season, but I just want to acknowledge that, you know, they did a really great job of saves this summer. And, and I also want to acknowledge the, um, the ticket, the, our ticket booth people who were cursed at and spit on and, um, treated really horrifying when people, never a local, but when people from out of town came and couldn't get a badge. And so, I want to acknowledge, um, the tremendous restraint that they showed, um, and the tremendous class that they showed to what were classless people. I also want to mimic, you know, ditto to everything Eileen said. Gil Caldwell, um, I considered a friend and, um, certainly a pioneer. Um, and there is a, uh, or a group of residents and activists have put together a, um, you know, service for him on September 20th, from 2 to 4 at Springwood Ave. Park. So, you know, I would, I would encourage everybody to, um, you know, to kind of come out and, and, you know, talk and celebrate all the, the, the great things Gil, Gil accomplished. And not city-related, but I just want to acknowledge our kids in Esberry Park went back to school this week, um, and it was virtual. And, and I just want to thank the school board and the school administration, and the parents, and the teachers, and everybody who's kind of learning this new normal in Esberry Park, myself included. You know, I really think that, um, you know, we're all learning a different way of schooling. And, um, and Esberry Park is, you know, certainly leading the way. And, and kudos to, um, Sancha and the board, and, and the teachers, and the administration, and all the parents, um, figuring out, you know, this kind of new normal. That's all I got.
Mayor Moore?
Thank you. Uh, just an item for information, uh, on the agenda tonight, 2020-269. If anybody was going to talk about that, you don't have to talk about it. It's going to be table tonight, so don't waste your three minutes. And then as far as, uh, to everybody, thank you so much for, uh, being safe, being careful. I urge you to continue to be careful. I urge you to continue to wear your masks. And as somebody said many meetings ago, Yvonne, we're not out of the woods yet. We don't know what's going to hit us in the fall, so everybody still be vigilant. And, uh, thank you all.
Matters from the City Manager?
I have nothing, Melody.
Matters from the City Attorney?
Nothing at this time, Melody.
We are on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
More with Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second, Clayton.
All in favor? Meeting is now open to the public. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on the phone, on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, and star six to unmute yourself. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. I will give you a one-minute warning when there is one minute remaining. I am calling upon 3350, 3350.
Uh, hi, Ernest McEnoly. Born at Deal Lake Drive, Esberry Park, New Jersey. Uh, I just want to say, in listening to the meeting, I think it's basically, everything was said was in the Twilight Zone. I really don't know the connection between what you all talked about and Esberry Park, New Jersey, but that's for another day. Let's see. Uh, we, we had a, uh, an arrest on Esberry Avenue, just over the Esberry border, of a, of a group that's well-known in Esberry called the DeLisas. The daughter of Peter DeLisa, which is well-known to Esberry Police, everybody in Esberry, Krista Richter DeLisa, she was the former fiance of the Deal Police Officer, where she broke up their family, they got turned into a drug addict, he died. They're back again, you know, they're related to the Wonder Bar. And what I find interesting is that there was a little infant involved there that CCP and the Ocean Township Police and DIFs had to remove. It was an Al Chapo residence, drugs, hollow point bullets, paraphernalia, child endangerment, infant removed, shotguns, rifles, handguns, ammunition, right? And you know what? The prosecutor, who, Peter DeLisa, very friendly with the Esberry Police, by the way, Detective Dello and that, he's the father of the arrested one, and he just recently worked for the prosecutor as a dog catcher, as a dog catcher, and they gave him a Glock, a weapon, which he proceeds to come to Esberry, get drunk, threaten people with his family, the garbage empire. Enough already with this garbage empire. Look at some of the background of these people with drugs, heroin, musicians overdosing. And you know what? Esberry Together is such a phony. You identify with all these people, like the Fasano family. Look at the Fasanos now. He's got a history of drugs in his life.
One minute remaining.
A child that has overdoses on drugs. Now, his other son, who's a big shot builder, developer in Esberry, Patrick, uh, Fasano, now arrested in brick after they moved out of Esberry a few months ago, same thing, international dealing of drugs, FBI involved, Homeland Security. And what do you talk about? You put articles in the paper. Oh, Pat and Pat saved Esberry. Pat Fasano and Chavino. What planet do you operate from? You know, listening to you all, especially Deputy Mayor Quinn, you have become the quintessential artist of minutia. You don't know what you're talking about. You're in office for eight years, and this city has gotten horribly worse with pedophilia, murder, crime, corruption, nepotism, and you're just blah, 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 how much you've done. You've done nothing. Esberry Together is an abject failure. One minute?
Time's up.
Okay, Mr. McEnoly, it's John Moore, and you, uh, never cease to amaze me, so I thank you and say next.
Always a pleasure.
I am calling upon Pam Lamberton. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Pam Lamberton, 321 Sunset Avenue. Um, I just have a couple of questions about some of the resolutions. 259 is the mobile surveillance trailer. I was wondering if you could tell us what that is and where it will be stored and what it will be used for. 261 is Affordable Housing Administrative Agent. I was wondering if you could give us a brief description of what that job description would be. 271 is the renewal of the hotel liquor license for the Esberry Hotel. I don't, that doesn't appear to have any special terms attached to it, but I would just like you to know, I live across the street from that hotel, and they are very good neighbors. We, uh, we met with them years ago and told them what our concerns were, and they have been very good about, um, quieting down at 10 o'clock at night. So, they're really good neighbors, and I, I would love to see their liquor license renewed. Um, and the last thing is 274, the Equity Committee. Excellent first step. Good work. Thank you. That's it.
Does that complete your comments?
Could you just answer my questions?
Okay. Thank you, Pam. Let me take an easy one. 271, I agree with you, like, the first year, we had multiple problems with, uh, Esberry. They reached out to buildings across the street where you live in now, Esplanade. They worked it out, and, uh, we have had not one complaint in two years. So, I totally agree with you. Your lic, your license will be renewed. 274, thank you for the comments. And as both Yvonne and Amy said, this is not like the final step. This is the first step in getting to where we all want to be in the city of Esberry Park. And then 259 and 261, I'll let Donna handle.
Okay. Hi, Pam. So, the Affordable Administrative Agent, that is a consultant that will help to administer our RCA program. That's a Regional Contribution Agreement. And what that was, um, many years ago, the city of Esberry Park received monies from various municipalities, um, as in lieu of them building affordable housing in their communities. And the city of Esberry Park has been administering this, this program in-house for the past several years. Um, we've hired, um, we're looking to appoint community grants and planning to help to administer this program. And also, now that we have our Affordable Housing ordinances in place, and the city will begin to build affordable housing throughout the city, we will use this group to administer the Affordable Housing Program, to do the marketing, um, and to assist our residents in obtaining and living in affordable housing that we plan to build in the near future. The other question was the, uh, police, the Surveillance Trailer, it's kind of a bad name, that's what the vendor calls it. This is going to be, um, if you know down by the beach, we have that large platform that we have borrowed. We use this for crowd control, for parades and other events. This is going to be our own that we will have. It will be portable. It, it folds up the picture that you see in the agenda, is not what it will look like when it's fully operational. It will become taller, and we will use it for parades and events like that. And I think that was it.
And just to expand on that a little bit, because I had the same concerns, this is not something that will be left in like, uh, on Fourth Avenue without, it'll be used for special events. So, it's not going to be something like put there for surveillance. I dislike the name also, because I think it gives it, doesn't give it service. So, it, it's more like for, to help with special events, for children, uh, crowd control, everything else. It will always be manned. It will not be left in the neighborhood just to see what's going on. Hopefully, that helps a little bit. Okay, thank you. Next?
You're, I am calling upon 5124. Please state your name and address for the record. 5124, please press star six to unmute yourself. 5124?
Yep. Hi, Rita Moreno. Heard a lot of stuff tonight. I think you should stay out of the Police Department, uh, Amy. I think they can, it probably needs to be reorganized and, and things like that, but you have, you're not a policeman, you don't know what they go through every day. And I think you should stay out of that. And, and every taxpayer in this town has a different opinion about what should be. With all your committees and all the things you have, they haven't improved the city one bit, especially the Green Team that made us get all cloth bags, and now we can't use them. We have to go back to plastic, remember? The other thing I wanted to talk about was, um, the cars that don't have the insignias on them. I think the police, the fire chief has one with two little insignias that you can't even see. And I don't know who drives a silver pickup truck, but he doesn't have any on his truck. Now, these are not their personal vehicles. They're supposed to be work vehicles, and they're supposed to have these insignias on both sides of their doors. So, uh, Ms. City Manager, what, what about that? That why aren't they all have insignias on them? That's an old thing. That's been going on for years and years and years, that they don't want to, uh, have insignias on their cars, because I'm sure they use them for personal use. And, uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about was what you, what the auditor said about the Community Development, uh, Funds. What's wrong with those? They were in the audit, I guess, as being defunct or deep, I don't know why. Could you explain that? Why they had the Community Development in the audit as not in favorable, uh, language?
One minute remaining.
Huh?
You have one minute remaining.
Oh, okay. And that's about it. I mean, like, you know, you're fooling around with fire when you get involved with police. They go to school to learn one thing. And I think you should leave them alone. Maybe they have to be reorganized. I don't know. I think they do, too. But I don't think citizens and pastors and church people should get involved in police work. It's not their business. They have different ideas and different attitudes. And that's the way it is with all your committees, too. They're all, I don't know what they're thinking about this town, but we did very well without them. Very well. That's it.
Okay, Rita, uh, it's John Moore. Uh, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you about the committees doing no good, and I think I wouldn't be the only one to disagree with you, I believe. The majority of the committees do a lot of good throughout the city. As far as like, we're not getting, you can attack Amy, you can attack all five of us, we're not getting involved with police work. As you can see, the makeup of the committee includes two police officers, so they're like, uh, 20% of the committee. So, we're looking for information and try to improve everybody. I think that should be everybody's goal in 2020, especially after this terrible year of the COVID and everything, and seeing what's happened in, uh, with George Floyd, seeing what's happening throughout the world. Uh, if we're not willing to see in climate control, if we're not willing to accept the challenge to try to improve things, then we're like at Oscars where they're headed for sand. That's my opinion. I, so, again, I respectfully disagree with you. As far as the CDBG audit, I don't have it in front of me, so Donna, if you want to comment or anything about that.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Rita, I'm assuming you're referring to the audit comments that were included in the audit presentation and the corrective action. The only comment I find regarding the CDBG was that there were certain items that draw down amounts were not supported by backup documentation. So, what that means is perhaps something was bought, and when the auditor went into the file, the invoice or something was not attached. So, um, this is something that the auditor made us aware, and the corrective action is that the CFO will be sure that the documents are prepared and submitted for reimbursement on a quarterly basis, so we don't get, um, caught, um, behind in the past. In the past, we didn't submit these, um, on a regular basis, and some things kind of got lost in the shuffle. So, there's nothing wrong with the program, but the program is actually very substantial. We actually received another $240,000 from the CARES Act that's going to be distributed throughout the community. And as far as the vehicles, we have a very stringent, uh, vehicle policy. We do have some decals that are not properly placed on the cars, and we have ordered new decals to be placed on. That is something we are aware of, so we will see that over the next couple of weeks once we get those decals, um, in, in, in. That's it.
Yeah, I'm just going to, I, if you don't mind, I'm just going to piggyback on what John said, which is not only true, but the, the Police Chief Kelso, the Chief Guy Thompson, Mike Casey, they're on board. The, you know, these were just, we had a discussion with them as well, Rita. So, I'm not doing something that they don't support. Yvonne's not doing something they don't support. They want to be a part of this dialogue, and they want to, um, have these conversations. So, I'm not really sure where that's, where that's coming from. And I mean, I could go down the list about committees and commissions. I'm just going to name one, which is the Environment and Shade Tree Commission, that hands out tons of free food to residents in Esberry Park in their community garden. I would also argue that any beautiful garden you see in Esberry Park is because of the Shade Tree Commission, and specifically Tom Pavinski. So, to suggest that, um, our boards and commissions don't do anything, I'm going to take great exception to. Done?
I am calling upon 0033. Please state your name and address for the record. 0033, please press star six to unmute yourself.
I, I have, haven't I?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Arthur Schlossback, from Summerfield Avenue. First, I, I'd like to say, uh, Melanie and Lisa in the clerk's office are just great. They're just great people. You guys have good staff there. Amy, my daughter who just left because she didn't want to say anything, wants to thank you. She was one of the beach collectors that got spit on and yelled at every day, and, uh...
And honestly, I am so heartbroken about that. Yep.
No, she's tough. She's done to tell you, she took eight people down to jump the fence, and held them till the cops got there, over the course of the summer. All right, so, um, I want to go into something very special to me. All right, so I want to go into something very special to me, the census, and I'm glad the councilwoman brought it up. Asbury Park got totally screwed and discounted in the last 2010 census. They put you down to 15,000 residents. There hasn't been since 1920 that little amount registered. It's always been 16,000, 17,000, 18,000. So I decided to volunteer, which you can't volunteer, they got to pay you. And they gave me the area around my house at Summerfield and Comstock. They gave me, in about 10 block radius, 43 different houses that I went to. And I signed up 128, most of them Mexican-Americans, there was one from Cairo family. But they never would have, would have been counted if the census didn't bring it in there or if the neighbors, some of the neighbors had told them. Because they don't know nothing about census, you know. They don't even know about census. Anyway, I think that the city council should direct the city manager to put out on their social media and all their blasts, just a tag on every blast that they put out for anything and get this done. Because it's very important that, you know, we get up to 18,000, 19,000 where we should be. If I got 128 in three blocks of the city that weren't, and none of these people were here the last census. There's a lot, a lot of new people here. And last, with your committee-
One minute remaining.
With the police, you know, I've been, I was a zero cop for six years in New York City. I've been with the Asbury Police Department as a COO for the last, 2011. They understand what you're doing. They want you to do what you're doing, believe me. They love, Mike Casey and these guys are definitely community oriented. So I, I'm done.
Does that complete your comments?
Okay, Arthur, it's John Moore. Thank you for your compliments about our staff in the clerk's office. I totally agree with you. As far as the census, believe me, the city manager, the council areas, Michael, the Assistant City Manager, everybody has been on top of this from day one. Beatrice through Cork is our focus point. If we have to give you her email address, I know you volunteered and you're right, you have to get paid. Jordan Modell's out there going door to door. And so we're hooking everybody up with them. And I believe earlier Yvonne said it's going to end, the end of September. I believe a judge in California ruled like the government shut it down a month early is illegal. So we're hoping it does go through October as originally scheduled. But until then, I totally agree with you. The more we can do to get more people like signed up and, right, because this is like gazillions of dollars and Asbury Park deserves a fair share. So anything we can help you to, where Jordan's having trouble getting addresses, we hooked him up. Anything we can do to help anybody, any census taker, like to get the addresses and to get even like apartment managers' names, we will gladly help. And believe me, the city manager's been on this from day one. And again, I thank you, I thank your daughter. What, what do you say?
The high rise is the problem.
No, you can't talk, you're muted. Okay, I'm only, and I thank your daughter also. Thank you, next.
So Mayor, I just wanted to, Melody, this is Donna, I just wanted to follow up on the census. Arthur made some good points and the mayor, you know, as he said, we have an audit, our communications director has been sending blasts out every day, different, various forms of media. But we did get an update from the Census Committee just today or the other day. We're at 49%, which is only one and a half points lower than we did at the end of the census in 2010. So we're going to exceed, if we keep up with this rate, of the collection that we did last year. And we're hoping to hit about 55 when all this is done, if not more. So, you know, thank you Arthur for volunteering and everyone else who's been doing it. And this is something, as the mayor said, is crucially important to our city. Thank you.
I'm calling upon 5481. Please state your name and address for the record. 5481, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Am I unmuted?
Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tracy Rogers, School Avenue. First, I want to say I regret to have to come here on this matter that could have been easily solved. I have a good relationship with some members on the council and I speak as a member of the Affordable Housing Coalition, not for the coalition, but as a member. The appointment of this company that you're about to hire to be the administrator for affordable housing is wrong. First, this company is admitted to a person in Hoboken who had issues with the company. They're not in, they're not in Hoboken. So they don't know what's actually happening in Hoboken with the affordable housing that's there and issues that may come up. These are, these are things that we, as Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition, mentioned to as a recommendation to pick a company that had representation locally, that knew our community. And also because the humans are coming, we want to make sure that the community has access to the information that's being happening so they make sure that they're able to get units and continue to live in Asbury Park. With this, we, let's give a little history about Asbury Park Affordable Housing. We've pushed the city and the city actually hired a consultant, which we actually, part of their proposal was that they put together a committee, which we had formed a committee eight months prior. We acquiesced to the ways that the council and their committee that they created wanted to go. We've also done everything to point out issues of compliance, that there was no administrator there, there is no housing liaison there. These are things that have put this, this city out of compliance. And with the mismanagement of RCA program, we caused for two families to be pushed out. So we have a lot of focus and knowledge collectively on this issue.
One minute remaining.
And we were not bought into this, to this decision making. And that is, that is problematic. We want to make sure we get the best company that's able to make sure that everybody, especially locally, has a part in this affordable housing ordinance that the city created. I only have two questions right now. And one, I want to ask, I want to ask the city, the city attorney of public opinion, can this council not approve this contract and pick another company next meeting? And out of the cost center, which, how will this company be paid?
Have you finished your comments, Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Yes, well, the appointment is at the discretion of the mayor and council. The mayor and council can act this evening to appoint as it is needed, or it could be deferred to a later meeting. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council.
Did that answer, did that, I'm sorry, it's John Moore. Did that answer both of his questions?
I believe the second question had to do with how they were going to be paid. Perhaps Donna, might you be in a better position to respond to that one? I don't know if that's in my ballyway.
Yes, sure. It will be, I'm sorry, Mary. Yeah, we have, we have a budget line for it in the budget and we pay for, out of the general budget moving forward, the front fund. We are not going to be charging it, it traces, we will not be charging it, we will not be charging their salary to the RCA program. We will keep that solely for the implementation of the affordable housing. Perhaps that was his question.
Okay, and Tracy, it's Moore again, I thank you. And Melody, next.
Joe Grillo, I'm calling upon Joe Grillo. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, Joe Grillo, 521 Cookman Avenue. Just wanted to give an update on Asbury Park Dinner Table. First of all, thank you for all the support from the public and from the city and city council on everything that we've been doing in Phase One, what we're calling Phase One. Since March 19th, we have delivered over, well, we spend that, we've spent down most of our funding and delivered over $200,000 in cash flow to restaurants. We've saved over 40 full-time jobs. And most importantly, we have, we have delivered and distributed over 65,000 dinner meals to families experiencing food insecurity in Asbury Park since then. This hasn't been done by just the co-creators of Asbury Park Dinner Table, but by the 30-plus and sometimes during the really bad months, 40-plus volunteers at the churches, individuals who just stepped up to say, how can I help? And, and we're really glad to be able to serve while everyone's still weathering COVID. Nobody thought that, that COVID would, when we started this, that COVID would still be around and that this would still be something that we would be participating in. But we are preparing for Phase Two and we're really excited to be part, participating with the Asbury Park Housing Authority to serve seniors. Starting in early October, we're going to be serving Monday, Wednesday and Friday at Rock Tower and Lumley Homes, 4:30 PM. And that is, that's something that's going to start early October. As far as the current distribution points, we're now serving dinner meals next Wednesday and, and we're going to be seeing, depending on funding, if we can do more. And those three distribution points are at Second Baptist Church and St. Stevens and United Fellowship Baptist Church. So, and those, and those distributions happen at 5:30 PM. So if anyone needs a meal-
One minute remaining.
-and we're still distributing meals. And we just want to thank all of our volunteers, all the community members that have stepped up and, and made this a success.
Does that complete the comments?
That's it.
John Moore again. Joe, thank you, your entire group, Kathy, everybody. One day, when we get through this, we're going to have that big special meeting, give beach guards or beach staff, everybody that helped to do this crisis, a thank you and a proclamation, you guys will be right up there. So again, thank you for everything.
I am calling upon 9742. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Sylvia. Sylvia, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. I hope everybody is doing well. First, I'd like to also acknowledge Reverend Caldwell, what a wonderful, wonderful man and what a huge loss because his hugely well-lived life. He really, his legacy will be here with us always. And in a lot of the topics that you've spoken about tonight, I'd like to make an announcement that's really great, thanking New Jersey Natural Gas, who is our partner with the, with the Boardwalk Radio Station. For the first time ever, they are going to continue the broadcast throughout September as a way to help Asbury Park in the shoulder season because we are going to need strong shoulder seasons now more than ever if we're going to help to stabilize our merchant community. I can't thank New Jersey Natural Gas enough for partnering with us on the, with the Boardwalk Radio Station, which has been eight years strong now. They've been doing their level best to get the word out whenever the beach badges were sold out so that people were not going to be coming down here and being disappointed when they got here. We ran a much different broadcast than we have customarily and they are just the most amazing partners and angels to Asbury Park. And I personally also would like to thank Tom Hayes, which he'll get mad at me for because as he says, it's not me, it's the gas company. Speaking about our shoulder season, we've got a lot of plans ahead to help-
One minute remaining.
One thing is, I'd like to really thank our merchant community for being amazing and being responsible. I'd also like to speak quickly, you know, I only have 45 seconds left. I respect and admire all of you, you know that, but I'm compelled to speak to Deputy Mayor Quinn tonight. As a human being, as a mom, as somebody who does business in Asbury, I admire you and thank you for everything that you do. Lastly, I'd like to say I'm so proud of this community for moving forward with this new council in conjunction with the APPD, which is an amazing department. And I say that from, you know, the bottom of my heart. This, this department and this community, particularly with this new council, will continue to set trends that other communities will follow. And I can tell you firsthand that there is nobody-
Okay, so Sylvia, where's, where's my three-minute person tonight? And sorry to cut you off, but if I let you go on, people are going to complain. John and Sylvia are friends, so we have to be consistent. Three minutes, bang, gong, whatever the gong show, you're over with. So no offense to you, but from here on out, everybody, three minutes, cut everybody off. It's just not fair to other people I do cut off. Thank you very much. Thank you for all the work you're in the chamber doing. And it's not the gas company, it is Tom Hayes and he can yell at me. Tom Hayes has been the best thing. It came out of Asbury Park and keeps on giving back to Asbury Park. So I can never thank him and his family enough and I thank you and your family. Next.
4860, I'm calling on 4860. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm just going to say thank you, thank you Sylvia. That's it.
Hi.
Go ahead Maureen. Maureen, we-
Okay, so I'm sorry, I don't have time for any niceties. There's a lot of stuff that you've thrown out into the meeting tonight, or thrown into the meeting, I should say. So the David Kaplan Audit, if you could make it clear how we actually see the content of the audit, especially the auditor's recommendations, suggestions, recommendations. I'd like to know who will be handling the new beach utility capital fund? Will that be our CFO? There's quite a bit of surplus and I'd like to know if the public could have a place to go on the website and see how those funds are being applied, the surplus funds. Okay, the RCA money, so there wasn't a problem with the RCA money as far as the money being loaned out and no permanent records were kept to ensure that those monies were either paid back or the people stayed, who borrowed the money, stayed in that, that property for the five years and it's mandatory? Would you please check that? All right, Eileen, the outdoor event, I'm not sure, could you give us the, the place and time? And also the same thing on Amy's Springwood Avenue event on 9/20, what time is that? Is this Springwood Avenue Park, I understand? And the administrator's salary-
One minute remaining.
How much is that going to be? This new administrator? And let's see. I think, I think that's all for now.
Does that complete your comments?
Thank you Maureen, John Moore. You were going in and out, so I think I heard most of it. Anything to do with the audit as far as like the auditor's recommendations and the city's action, that's been live on the city's website since Friday. I think, but I'm not sure, and I defer this to Donna, that the audit report should also be on the website. If it's not, we'll put it up. It's like, Lauren and Paige will have fun. As far as what you said, as far as RCA money and it, I don't know if you said it wasn't being run right and people were beating the system for five years and you're saying we should look into it? We definitely will look into it, to test my knowledge, that did not happen. And you say as far as the administrator's salary, it's not a new person on the payroll, it's called administrator. I believe it's on tonight's agenda for 65,000. Donna, correct me on anything if I'm wrong. Donna, correct me on anything if I'm wrong.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Maureen, the amount for the administrative agent is an amount not to exceed $65,000. That's an annual cost though, so as we're more than halfway through the year, there would be significantly less spent on it for this year. The audit report will be posted on the website after tonight's meeting. I can also respond to the request. So, Maureen, just to be really clear, I'm not putting, the city is not putting on the event for Reverend Gil Caldwell. I was notified about the event from both Reverend Van Zant and Nicole Harris. And that is Sunday, September 20th, from 2:00 to 4:00. But any more details, then you should probably reach out to Van Zant or Nicole.
Hello, Maureen. Coffee with a Councilperson is Tuesday, September 15th, 10:00 to 11:00 at Sweet Waters Coffee and Tea at 521 Hookman Avenue. You know, we've been doing this coffee with the councilperson every couple of months for the last few years. It's a great opportunity for people to come out and share some ideas, thoughts, and concerns with us.
Okay, I am moving on to 1133. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Felicia Simmons. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm calling excited on approval of our census event and the conversation about the census here tonight. I'm excited but saddened to the point where we've, we are at the numbers we're at. And reaching out, looking for the census for the last couple of months, not finding any. I've come in contact with a gentleman named Jeffrey Sumner from the state, being part of a statewide push for black and brown people to be pushed. Asbury Park, Neptune, and Long Branch are noted federally and statewide, 30 from the bottom in reporting our numbers, specifically in a county where we are higher in the count, but Asbury Park, Neptune, and Long Branch are the bottom of the state. He was excited to meet me and even more so to say, they come out and they're sending numerators, official from the state census, that come out this Sunday to help blanket the town to make sure that everybody is counted. So if you run across one of these numerators on the street, they'll be escorted by a local person of some sort. So you feel comfortable, please take your census. Everybody, we are at, we're close, we're about 49%, which is higher than our last census at 48%, but it is nowhere near what we're going to need in this new COVID world. So again, pushing for everyone to say, again, I did this event out of my own pocket. Every bit of the funds came literally from myself to make sure that this event is taken on and that Asbury Park and Neptune are counted.
One minute remaining.
I'm finished. And everybody have a good night. That's it.
Felicia, John Moore, we deeply appreciate your event and we agree with you. I don't, I'm not going to agree with you that we're the bottom of the state because I've been talking to the governor's office and they've been asking me, hey, John, you're at this number and you're a little bit ahead of like 10 years ago. Can you notch it up a little bit? So we're not just up. And again, just so everybody knows, as much as you're getting involved now, this is not something the city started three weeks ago. This is something the city's been working on the past 18 months and trying to get people involved with beaches through Cark where we subbed it out to let them be the lead agency and everything. And again, the people volunteering, like Arthur, like Jordan, everything, we are above 10 years ago's numbers and we'd like to increase it by another 10% a year. So anything at all help you can give us is deeply appreciated. So I thank you for having your event. I wish you all the best.
Not seeing any more hands raised. Do I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Move to close, and you chat me.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now closed to the public. Mike, I've lost my screen now, but okay, there we go. All right. We are on two minutes. I have the municipal, the municipal council executive meeting minutes of August 12th at 5:00 PM, the municipal council regular meeting minutes of August 12th at 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
Lily Kendall.
Second, chat. We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to the consent agenda resolutions. We have 2020-242, a resolution approving special events applications. 243, a resolution approving special events applications from the August meeting. Resolution 244, a resolution to transfer tax payments from Block 2608 Lot 2. Resolution 245, a resolution to transfer tax payment from Block 3707 Lot 2.04 to Block 3707 Lot 2.03. Resolution 246, the resolution to waive interest for tax and sewer payments on Block 2402 Lot 9. Resolution 247, a resolution to waive interest for tax and sewer payments on Block 301 Lot 10. Resolution 248, a resolution to waive interest for tax and sewer payments on Block 2202 Lot 16. Resolution 249, a resolution authorizing the cancellation of a tax sale certificate, 16-00089, due to erroneous sewer billing, Block 1103 Lot 1. Resolution 250, a resolution to credit sewer account relating to Block 2404 Lot 4.02 621 Lake Avenue, due to a billing error. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Quinn.
We now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. We have Resolution 2020-251, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Lily Kendall.
Second?
Second, Chapman.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2020-252 is a resolution accepting the 2019 municipal audit. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Do I have a?
Second, Kendall.
Okay, we will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-253, a resolution adopting a corrective action plan in response to the recommendations contained in the 2019 report of audit. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Kendall.
We now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-254, a resolution amending Resolution Number 2020-152, so as to exceed the 2020 beach season through September. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Wait, I have a question.
Sure.
I have a question. Okay, so it's more for clarification to Donna and Michael so they can clarify to the audience and to the world. This extends the beach season, but it does not extend bicycles and dogs. So explain to everybody how that's being done because if not, everybody's going to walk away from this meeting saying, what's going on with bicycles and dogs?
So thank you, Mayor, for letting us clarify. So the dog beach will remain open from 6:30 PM, correct me, Mike, from 1:00 until the morning. Dogs will not be allowed on the boardwalk until the end of September and bicycles are prohibited on the boardwalk year round after 10:00 AM.
So just to clarify, by emergency executive order by the OEM director, bicycles and dogs were pushed back to October 1st.
6:30, yeah, so 6:30 PM to 8:30 AM, dogs are allowed on the dog beach and that will be through the end of September.
Right. Okay, same as the regular season, same as the beach.
Correct.
And same with the boardwalk and bicycles and dogs. So I just don't want people saying, well, they extended the beach season, but they didn't say anything about dogs and bicycles. So that has been addressed, so dogs and bicycles are being pushed back to October 1st also.
Correct. And that was done through an emergency declaration from our OEM director and all this information you can find posted on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the roll call for 2020-254. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To Resolution 2020-255, a resolution authorizing emergency fiber repairs for the police department. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Do I have a second, Clayton? Are there any questions or comments before we move on to roll call? Not hearing any. Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-256 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of Verizon intelligent lighting along the boardwalk. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it, Amy.
Second, Moore.
Okay, any questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-257, a resolution authorizing the purchase of personal protective and sanitizing equipment PPE with community development. Do I have a motion?
Lily Kendall.
Second?
Clayton, second.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any. We'll move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-258, a resolution authorizing the purchase of personal protection turnout gear for the fire department. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Second, Quinn.
Any questions or comments before we move on to roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To Resolution 2020-259, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a mobile surveillance trailer for the police department. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Kendall.
Questions or comments before we move on to roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-260 is a resolution authorizing the emergency replacement of the PLC controllers at the wastewater treatment plant. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
Now move on. Questions or comments before we move on to roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Council, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-261, a resolution awarding a contract for an affordable housing administrative agent. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second, Moore.
Any questions or comments before we move on to roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-262, awarding of a contract to Millennium Communications Groups for the wastewater treatment plant to tie into the existing city fiber network. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Do I have a second?
Second, Clayton.
Second, Kendall.
Questions or comments? I will now move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? We're on to Resolution 2020-263, a resolution awarding a contract to Millennium Communications Group for the changeout of wireless to fiber links at the convention center. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
So can I just ask that we.
Yeah, Eileen, yes, this, the vendor will change the name to Convention Hall and move it from Convention Center.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Convention Center is the wrong terminology. It will be Convention Hall.
Then I'll second.
Okay, I have Councilmember Chapman for the second. Any questions or comments before we move on to roll call? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-264, a resolution authorizing the extension for emergency medical service billing. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Kendall.
Questions or comments before roll call? Okay, we'll now move on to roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To Resolution 2020-265, a resolution awarding of a contract to Millennium Communications Groups for the north boardwalk cameras. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second?
Moore, second.
Any questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-266, a resolution authorizing an annual service agreement for power DMS for the police department. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Moore.
Second, Clayton.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-267, a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Monmouth. to the Monmouth County Open Space Grants Program for improvements to Sunset Lake Park. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
Any questions or comments before we move on to roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, and I apologize, I should have made a statement before when you said questions, my bad. As much as the title says Sunset Avenue Park, there's also money going to Springwood Avenue Park, so I just want the public to know that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We are on to Resolution 2020-268, a resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Do I have a second?
Second, Quinn.
Any questions or comments before we move on to roll call? Now, not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to Resolution 2020-269, which is a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park, designating Veterans Relocation Project LLC as a redeveloper of the parcel known as Block 903, Lot 9 in the city of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, New Jersey, commonly known as 45 Borden Avenue, in the Springwood Avenue redevelopment area, and approving an escrow agreement and redeveloper agreement, buying in between the city and Veterans Relocation Project LLC. Now, I'm looking for a motion to table 2020-269.
More, more motion to the table.
Second.
Kendall, second.
Any questions or comments before we move on to roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
2020-269 has now been tabled. We are on to Resolution 2020-270, a resolution approving the 2020 to 2021 liquor license renewals. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Any questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to Resolution 2020-271, a resolution approving the renewal of a hotel liquor license number 130336-069-001, which is held by 210 Fifth Avenue Venture Urban Renewal LLC, doing business as the Asbury Hotel for the 2020-21 liquor license term. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second, Chapman.
Any questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to Resolution 2020-272, a resolution approving a liquor license with special conditions for Porter at Asbury Park LLC, doing business as Porter for the 2021 licensing year. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Quinn.
Any questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to Resolution 2020-273, a resolution approving a liquor license with special conditions for Bond Street Bar and Grill LLC, doing business as Bond Street Bar and Grill Capital Line and Lotteria for the 2021 licensing year. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Kendall.
Questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-247, a resolution establishing an ad hoc advisory committee to be known as the Equity Committee. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Any questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we're now on to ordinances. Ordinances for second reading public hearing. Do I have, the ordinance is up for a second reading public hearing. I have ordinance 2020-22, an ordinance adopting amendments to the strategic area rebuilding spirit, STARS redevelopment plan. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing on 20, I'm sorry, do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public on 2020-22?
Move it, Quinn.
Move it, Kendall. Second, Kendall. All right.
Okay, do you want anyone to give a brief overview of 22 before we go on to the public?
It wouldn't hurt, so yes, let's do it.
Okay.
So, this is Donna, this is an amendment, an ordinance to amend the STARS redevelopment plan. This plan expired. This was created on, I think, February in 2008, and it expired, and these are the amendments that have been in place to extend this redevelopment area. I'm sorry, I'm looking for the, that's it.
Okay, members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, and your comments can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. And please remember star six to unmute yourself. I am calling upon Rita Moreno. Please state your name and address for the record. Rita? Star six to unmute yourself, please.
Hello?
Okay, we got you Rita, please state your name and address for the record.
Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. This STARS program, what does it do? I mean, that's something out of the past, I forgot about it. What has it done so far that you're renewing it? Does anybody know? I mean, none of you were there in 2008, but I was, and I remember the program, but I thought it died. So, what is the STARS program doing?
Rita, John Moore, I was here in 2008, this is like, it was originally adopted on July 5th, 2000, so.
Actually, back in 1999, Mayor.
Well, whatever. The paperwork I have says adopted ordinance number 2548, July 5th, 2000. So, it was a 20-year plan that had to be renewed, so planning went through it, made recommendations to council, council sent it to planning board, planning board made recommendations as far as how to correct this plan, and if I say anything wrong, I know Michelle Alonso may still be on the phone with Donna and correct me. Basically, you know, it's part of the section, it no longer, it used to include Springwood Avenue. Now, Springwood Avenue has its own plan, so it's anything like south of Springwood Avenue from Neptune, Neptune as far as the three of the boundaries, as far as particulars, I'll let staff go into that. If you need more particulars.
Michelle Alonso is here on the line. This was an expiring redevelopment plan, we decided to continue it as a redevelopment plan. The staff and myself upgraded the plan, removed the parts of it that referred to Springwood Avenue, since it has its own plan. We upgraded the bulk and building requirements to reflect the new zoning amendments for both requirements for the city, and we had taken out of the plan the references to commercial properties, since there no longer are commercial properties because of the creation of the Springwood redevelopment plan. This is a neighborhood of one and two family houses. We have seen redevelopment activity in this neighborhood with the creation of new one and two family houses, mostly aimed at first-time home buyers, and mostly built by some of the nonprofits in the city such as Habitat for Humanity and Interface.
Why would you take out the commercial part?
The commercial part, because it was already taken out. When Springwood Avenue was carved out of this redevelopment plan, and it was, and its own redevelopment plan was created, right now, in this redevelopment area, there is only one commercial property, which is grandfathered and can remain as a grandfathered property, but it's located smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
Which property is that?
It's a restaurant. It's a restaurant on Atkins Avenue.
That's the only commercial property in the whole development over there? Don't they need stores over there? They always have them.
No, Rita, Springwood Avenue is not in, is not in this plan area. This plan area is the residential, is all residential, it's from south of Springwood to the Neptune border. On the west is Ridge Avenue, and it goes to, I'm sorry, it goes to Atkins Avenue. So, this is all one and two family residential housing.
It would have been nice if you had a little industrial park, but I guess we don't care about that, giving jobs out to people, right? Why didn't you do something like that?
Because this is a one and two family residential neighborhood where there's almost no vacant land, the vacant land that is there are large enough to accommodate a one-family home or a two-family home, but not, but there are not parcels large enough to create an industrial complex.
Well, you know, it's just too bad that the city doesn't have one. All you do is plan on housing, and that's it. There's no other diversion about what you're doing. There's no industry, there's no nothing. I mean, like, why haven't you tried to do something? I didn't even know that, what does that STARS program mean, anyway? What does that mean from 2008? That's like the redevelopment plan from 2002. What does that mean? What does STARS program mean? What does that word mean?
It means strategic area rebuilding spirit, redevelopment plan. That was the name given 20 years ago to this redevelopment plan by community, and in partnership with the, with community and nonprofits, in an effort to uplift the neighborhood, and what we're doing once again is we're keeping the same basic redevelopment plan, it permits low-density housing, which is there, and we are committed to new low-density housing being built on the vacant lots that are there, and supporting the community groups that build it.
Who's the community group? Who's that?
As I mentioned, two of the community groups that have purchased independently vacant parcels in this neighborhood are Interface Neighbors and Habitat for Humanity.
Uh-huh, okay, Interfaith Neighbors again. Good, they're becoming rich here, I'll tell you that. I mean, like, give somebody else a chance if you're gonna do something like that. Let somebody else come in.
Rita, you're straight.
No, but the STARS program is a fake thing, and you know it too, John. 20 years of.
Just stay on the ordinance.
Do we still have Rita?
Now, 20 years have passed, and you saw what happened with the STARS program, why would you continue it? Nothing really happened with the STARS program, other than Interfaith Neighbors building up, you know, getting land for nothing and building houses and making money. Why would you continue that? Why don't you give somebody else a chance? There's a lot of little developers that, well, you have one in town that lives here, give him a chance, but you don't. STARS program doesn't work, it just works for one person, Interfaith Neighbors. That's who it works for. Look at what they've done. Yeah, they build nice houses, that's true, but it hasn't benefited us in any way, that they built up the west side, but you got the money for the park. I mean, like, I don't understand why we don't have any industry here. We used to have it. I mean, planners are always one-family and two-family houses, anybody can do that. And that's all you have over there. There's not, there's a deli on Atkins Avenue, I think, and that's about it, and the restaurant. That's it. The restaurant was on Adams Street, I think, it's not there no more. But, I mean, like, what are you thinking about with all this housing and no industry for jobs? There's no jobs. But, okay, the STARS program, that's all I have to say.
Hey, we are, I am calling upon Felicia Simmons, please state your name and address for the Felicia, star six to unmute yourself, please.
She did unmute herself, and then. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
I double mute, I unmute, and then I put on the mute on my phone, I double mute, I get Zoomed, you know, all the time, I mess up. My question on STARS and this program, and I'm kind of like Ms. Moreno, I'm living here, actually 20 years, I was just fresh out of high school when this, when the, I guess, the original deal happened, and I haven't seen any change except for in the last few months. We're in dire need of commercial, and what I read from the original Springwood deal is that it was supposed to have commercial on the bottom floors and throughout the Springwood. And also knowing what's happening in Neptune, they plan to go commercial on their side of the street in their area. We're in need of it, and the densify, I would say, and to keep up with the east side, who I've seen severe density building beautifully. I'll also say on the west side, to do a beautiful, new, innovative building of housing and commercial, because Ms. Moreno was right, we truly, truly need some kind of industry. We also need a densified, it makes more sense, to be denser on that area, because you increase the property value, the higher you go up, because then you add a view of the ocean, right? So, to rethink about this deal, in the new COVID world, in the new world of the last couple decades, the field has changed, so I would say just maybe re-go, go back in. And as a young person, semi-young, we're in need of industry, the conversations that I'm hearing across the table is commercial space, affordable commercial space, someplace where. commercial space, someplace where they want to come and bring their business, but there's no space for it, and what there is is unaffordable. So just to rethink about those new innovative things that are on the table now and completely doable, where it wouldn't have been an idea 20 years ago, but it's completely possible and doable now.
Felicia, this is I mean Chapman talking, and I, you know, I absolutely agree with you and Rita Moreno. You know, the Renaissance has retail space, they've been unable to find tenants to go into it. It's something that we spoke to the city manager about, you know, when she first came on board and then, of course, COVID happened. But it is something that's definitely on our radar. We're, we're, we're Springwood Avenue is one of our goals. And it's something that we're thinking about, it's something we're gonna work for.
Thank you. I just think it will be great for the city.
And I absolutely agree. We all agree.
Does that complete your comments?
That's it. That's complete my comments.
Thank you. I am calling upon Arthur Schlossbach. Please state your name and address for the record.
Arthur Schlossbach. I live on Summerfield Avenue. I kind of agree with Rita, which I normally don't, a little bit. My father owned the last strip mall on Springwood Avenue that I know of. It broke down in 1970 and then he moved it around the corner between Madison and Cookman. We don't need any more housing in that area until we get a supermarket there. You know, you, you, you build all the, the people build things and there's no schools for them, but buildings, there's no, there's no food for them. You, you live over there, you don't have a car. It's two and a half miles, maybe three miles to ShopRite or a half, a mile, almost a mile to, to SuperX. This, 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 keep building housing and housing with no, no infrastructure behind it, no, no lawns or mats, no stuff like that. You know, that, that, that has to change. Change these ordinances, you know? We need, and we need more middle income. It's too expensive in Asbury Park, you know? All right, that's it.
Not seeing any more hands raised, oh, wait, not seeing any more hands raised? A motion to close the public hearing on 2020-22.
Motion to close, Kendall.
Second, Chapman. A motion to adopt 2020-22.
Question.
Sure.
And Michelle, if you're still on, please again, and, you know, I voted against this the first time, I voted against it, the planning board, no matter how I vote tonight. But I think a lot of people do not realize, do not listen to you, this does not include Springwood Avenue. Springwood Avenue, because it got its separate plan, has been carved out of the STARS program. So anything on Springwood Avenue, including the property that Eileen mentioned where you say, "We need this, we need that," it's going unrented. The property the city owns behind or in front of Boston Way, tell developer to come in and we'll work together with them to build everything you're talking about. So it does not include Springwood Avenue. So, I mean, as much as I do not like this plan, I'm voting against it, but you gotta understand where the, where, where, where it exists. So as much art, you said your family owned a business on Springwood Avenue. Felicia, you want business on Springwood Avenue. This plan has nothing to do with Springwood Avenue. Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong. Nope, too late, next.
Okay, we'll move on to roll call for 2020-22. Councilmember Chapman?
Melody, hold on a second. Was there a motion in a second?
I missed it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. All right, let's, do I have a motion to adopt 2020-22? Hello? Hello?
Counsel.
Am I hearing anyone?
You're here.
Here.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I had to unmute, I had to unmute myself, sorry.
Do I have a motion to adopt 2020-22?
Move to adopt.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll now move on to the roll call for 2020.
Unless there's any further discussion.
Hold the roll call.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Same.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to the public hearing for 2020-23, which is a bond ordinance amending and supplementing Bond Ordinance Number 3038, which provides for improvements to the sewer plant, sewer plant heretofore finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, a state in New Jersey on January 16, 2013, to increase the appropriation by five hundred thousand and increase the authorization of bonds or notes by four hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. Do you want a brief overview before we move on to open the meeting to the public?
Yes, please.
This is Donna. This, this is supplementing a bond ordinance that was adopted by City Council back in January of 2013 in the amount of 3.3 million dollars. This is to do repairs to the RBCs in the sewer plant. We had to amend the amount due to the increase in price.
Okay. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Your comments can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. Do I have a motion to open the public, to open the meeting to the public on the hearing on 2020-23? Do I have a motion?
Move, Kendall. Second, Kendall.
All in favor? The public hearing is now open on Ordinance 2020-23. I am calling upon Maureen Nevin. Maureen, please state your name and address for the record. Maureen, there you go. Maureen, star six to unmute yourself.
Yeah. Melody?
Yes.
Melody?
Yes, Maureen, okay.
Yeah, okay, well, my question is, I'm not familiar with this bond, it goes back so long. Is this an Adzalor bond?
No.
It's not. And if, if, if for some reason the payments are, are not made, what does it defer to? What is it, what's it backed up to?
This, this is, this is for the city, for, for the wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
This is, this is an obligation the city is taking on to repair the RBCs which help to run the sewer plant. I'm not, I'm not sure this follows.
The earlier bonds, I believe, if, if there was a default or.
A default on behalf of the city?
Or, which, which, which means that they would immediately, the city would immediately do a, a rise in the, in the property tax to, to collect the money immediately from the residents. So I'm asking, is this, is this new, is this considered a new bond or it's an amendment to it, supplementing it? So, you know, is it, or is it not going to defer to the residents for payment?
So this, this was authorized back in January of 13 for 3.3 million dollars. We're increasing the authorization by about $500,000. These are notes that we are, that we will be funding now. So I, it's, if there's no default upon the city, is that what you're asking? Just like in any bond, I'll have Fred defer to the mechanism on the default by bond. I'm not understanding your question.
I believe the sewer, sewer plant, I believe, is this, can you hear me?
You're cutting in and out.
I believe that the sewer plant bonds are all revenue based, which means that the, the payments.
This is not self liquidating, no.
Made from the revenue of the sewer plant.
This is not self liquidating.
I'm sorry, what? Hello? Did you repeat that? Hello?
Did we leave the city manager?
Yeah, is this Donna?
I'm, I'm here, can you hear me? I'm, I'm dying, hold on.
I heard nothing for a while there. So, did, did you hear the last that I said? Basically, you know, the, the payments are dependent upon the revenue from.
No, they're not. No, they're not, that's what I'm saying. This is not a self liquidating, this is, this is, this is like any other bond. The sewer plant is, we're, we're bonding this, we don't have, this, this isn't, I'm trying to think of the best way to explain this. It's, this, this isn't, although it's for the sewer plant, improvements to the sewer plant, this isn't a self liquidating fund.
So where's, where does the money come from to pay the bondholders?
From, from our, our capital bond ordinance.
I'm sorry, from your what?
Due to a, a road improvement or something. It's not dependent upon money in the sewer plant. Our sewer plant, as you may have heard from our audit report, we only have about a half million dollars in there. Our sewer plant is, is running at a break even point, so we're not able to fund projects through the sewer utility. Therefore, the city is taking on this debt through a bond ordinance.
So this is money from the general point?
Yes, correct.
Hmm. But that is, that does affect your tax rate, doesn't it?
Well, any, any bond that, the, any debt the city incurs can have the impact, but as you know, we were able to cut the, the tax rate by about a point this year. So, and as you heard from our auditor, we're, we're doing well. So while anything can happen that the tax rate may increase, we don't anticipate that by taking on this debt. And this is something that is definitely needed. This was planned to do many years ago and it's finally getting done now, but this is critical to the infrastructure of the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, I, I don't understand why we're, we're so low on, on revenue, because the, certainly the sewer plant, the revenues for the sewer plant should be going up because we have all this new construction. There's, there's more people on, on the sewer system now than there was before, not like, you know, everything else with COVID. This actually is, is, is not affected by COVID.
Hey, Maureen, John Moore.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna shed a little bit of light on that question. Part of the problem of why Moore's not being collected by the sewer plant, you can blame on me. City managers and administrations have said, John, like, you know, it's a utility, it's gonna be self liquidating. I'm like, well, it is, it barely is, and the past administrations have said, we have to have a raise in the sewer tax. I'm like, look, guys, and this is going back to like 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, whatever, we're, we're increasing taxes. I can't increase taxes and increase sewer rates, so if we're just getting by by the skin of our teeth, I could deal with that. So part of the reason we're not collecting so much is because we did not increase the sewer tax, which would have affected you just as much as this bond or anything else did. So as much as we were like increasing taxes and we gradually reduced that, where this year we're having a tax decrease, you know, one day we're gonna have to have a sewer tax increase. But in past years, you can blame it on me for not hitting with a double tax. Thank you.
Well, the sewer, the sewer bills keep going up. They're much higher than they were when I moved here, for sure. And, and over the past few years, they've, they've gone up an awful lot of money.
If your sewer bill went up the past, I'm gonna say since 2013, it's because of your water usage, because since I've been on council, we have not increased, I believe I could be off by a year since 2013, the budget was introduced before I was on council. But since 2014, we have not had an increase in the sewer tax. And if I, if I'm wrong in that, I'll have somebody get in touch with you tomorrow and I'll correct that, but I know.
Yeah, because most, most neighbors are always complaining about how the sewer bill is always going up.
Well, then your water usage is going up.
Yeah. Mayor, you're absolutely correct.
I was also gonna say, John, I, I've been on as long as you, you're absolutely right.
Yeah. So, so Maureen, if, if in fact your sewer bill has gone up, the mayor is correct, that is because your water usage has gone up. American Water is responsible for reporting that information to the city. So if you feel that your rates have gone up for your sewer, I would contact American Water. Perhaps you have some excess water leakage that is being reported that is not appropriate.
Because I, I got a separate filter and water company, that does.
And again, it may not even be your usage is going up, but believe me, the BPU has given New Jersey American Water Company big increases percentage wise in the last five years where the city has not increased the sewer tax. So yes, the sewer bills went up because BPU gave New Jersey American Water increases to supposedly do infrastructure, whatever they did with it, but, so my water bill went up also as far as, but, so it may not even be usage, it could just be five years of increases by, authorized by BPU.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, I don't know, I, I just, I just, it just seems to me that we, we should have additional revenues because of all the, the new, the new hookups, you know? Just on the basis of that, I, I, I would really. Did, did the auditor ask about this at all? Did he mention the, the sewer, the sewer plant?
Yes, one, one of his recommendations, like, yes, one of his recommendations is to increase the rate that's supposed to be done every year, and that, but it's not increasing, I'm gonna say, the tax rate. So it's more for hookups and everything. And you're absolutely right, some of the big hookups, some of the big hotels, they were the ones that, like, were hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they kept us at self liquidating. Without those coming online, we would have been self liquidated and we would have had to raise taxes.
Yeah. All right. Well, I'll, I'll have to look at the recommendation. This, this telephone is terrible, I should have used my home phone. I'm, I'm missing like every other word. I, to follow you is very difficult. All right. Well, thank you for answering my questions.
And feel, feel free to, feel free to call either Donna and Joanne and follow up if we're having a bad connection.
Donna or Joanne?
Correct, CFO.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other hands raised? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing on 2020-23?
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Moore.
All in favor?
All right.
The public hearing is now closed on Ordinance 2020-23. Do I have a motion to adopt 2020-23?
Move it, Moore.
Kendall, second.
Any questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to the public hearing for Ordinance 2020-24, which is a bond ordinance providing for improvements to Bond Street, a transportation utility improvement, buying in the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, the state of New Jersey, appropriating 2,600,000, therefore, including a grant expected to be received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation, and authorizing the issuance of 2,600,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance the cost thereof. Can we have a brief summary of this ordinance? Can we have a brief summary of this ordinance?
Uh, yes, my on muted. Um, this is a bond ordinance for improvements to Bond Street. Um, a portion of this is a NJDOT grant that will help supplement the project.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the meeting, the public hearing on 2020-24?
Move to open, Clayton.
Do I have a second?
Second, Kendall.
All in favor?
Right.
The public hearing is now open on Ordinance 2020-24. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, and your comments can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. I am calling upon Rita Morano. Please state your name and address for the record. Rita, and star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, uh, Rita Morano, Eighth Avenue. Is this all of Bond Street, the whole street? Or just part of it?
I believe just part of it. Mike Manzella, you on the line?
I- I am here, this is Mike Manzella. It's- the limits of the project are Bond Street, from Summerfield Avenue in the south to Fifth Avenue in the north.
So, it's from, what'd you say, from Summerfield?
Yes, to Fifth.
Summerfield to Fifth.
To Fifth. Oh, so it doesn't go all the way?
Nope, we- we picked the worst part and the part we could manage financially without impacting the taxpayers.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, don't forget Eighth Avenue.
I know, it's up there on the top of our list.
Okay. Oh, how much is the grant that we're gonna get, do you know?
Yeah.
I think it's four hundred something?
It's- it's, yeah, it's just a half a million dollars.
Yep. A half a mil?
Just- just a-
Just under, yep.
Uh-huh. So, it's still gonna be bonded for two point six, but we're gonna get a half a mil, so that makes it two point one?
Mm-hmm.
Right. I'm not sure, uh, I think it's two point six plus the half mil.
So, when we get the grant, that goes right off the bond? Or no?
I'm not sure.
We're going to bond two point six for the project, Rita. And that four hundred will be- will be applied to the project. And then, at the end of the day, hopefully, we'll have not spent the full bond of two point six. But yes, the four hundred plus will go towards the cost initially.
Hmm, okay. By the way, your sewer bill is, uh, by the consumption of your water bill. I want the- I couldn't get in before, so I'm just telling you now.
You are a hundred percent correct. If you use more water, your sewer bill goes up. You're a hundred percent correct.
Okay. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
I am not seeing any more hands raised? Do I have a motion to close the hearing on 2020-24?
Move it to close, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Moore.
All in favor? The public hearing is now closed on Ordinance 2020-24. Do I have a motion to adopt 2020-24?
Move it, Moore.
Do I have a second?
Second, Kendall.
Any questions or comments before roll call? Not hearing any? Councilmember Chapman? Councilmember Chapman?
Sorry, everything did, yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to adjournment. Do I have any other, any comments or questions before we move on to adjournment?
Motion to adjourn, Moore.
Second, Kendall.
All in favor? Meeting is closed.
All right, everybody stay safe.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye.